Can everybody hear me? They can hear me, can they hear me? Okay. I'm just having fun.
They can hear it?
Alright, well, big old room full of people, huh? Alright, so we made it a little bit late, six oh one, March twenty fourth, we're gonna call this workshop um to order and has anybody got an indication they wanna give? No? Then I will. Ready? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, Lord, we uh thank you for blessing us and getting us all here um safely and healthy. We ask that you work through each one of us tonight and just give us the right things to say and the decisions to make. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The announcements?
Rich is not gonna be here tonight. She's gonna have a family issue.
People nineteen, Easter egg hunt, our department's still looking for donations, eggs and candy. And I believe they're gonna have a stuffing party at the Chamber Commerce on fifteenth.
I believe you're right. Those are all perfect. You support that message?
I support that message.
Okay. Alright, so according to my wife told me today. And you're right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up to you, you're right, if you like, the third of my wife. So, we've got the Easter egg hunt on the nineteenth and then they're doing stuffing Easter eggs on the fifteenth, right?
Correct.
And what was it, the Chamber?
Okay.
Is there a time, does anybody know for Easter egg stuffing eggs?
I don't remember.
Don't know? And then I was trying to remember the time, noon, right? Noon till eggs are gone, so to be about twelve. I was thinking it'd be about twelve oh two, twelve oh three. They're gone quick, so if you're gonna take your little ones, Easter egg hunting, be there, be there early because as soon as they say go, it's over real quick. So, um that's on the nineteenth, starts at noon. Any other announcements, anything else going on within cities we won't tell anybody about? That nobody may not know?
We gotta do street service system?
We do, we've got these cool little microphones, hopefully everybody out there can hear us better. The camera is much better camera, so good stuff. Okay? Any citizens input? I didn't have any sheets. Alright. So we're on five oh six already, we're getting close already. Alright, so we'll start this workshop up, um this workshop is to talk about the comprehensive plan drafting zoning ordinance. Um, this was a a section that we had left out of our meeting previously and I think this is probably gonna be, in my opinion, one of the most important sections of this comprehensive plan. Because as much as we all want to wish and hope and say and whatever and even do sometimes with the laws of the state and what we're held to, if you don't have the ordinance in place, you can't do it. So, um and and to be honest, it probably took me two years of being involved with the city to understand that importance, right, so. Classic cart before the horse, if you don't do the ordinance, you can't do whatever it is you're wanting to do, that's the best way to look at it. Alright, we'll kick it off and get started.
Christie will be here shortly, she found Dallas traffic. You wanna start with future land use slash zoning discussions, though, Christie gets here, she can go into her lovely full comp plan.
Now, do we, do we have another uh product that she can wear, just in case?
Yeah, we're already on.
Cool.
No, we're right here. Okay, um, I think we're good for it now, most of the stuff's on the walls. Um, I'm gonna let Christie kinda handle the comp plan section as she is the lead for that project, I'm just more gonna discuss land use, so we're gonna be looking at this wall lot and zoning in the entirety. First of all, I wanna thank y'all again for awarding us real zoning um ordinance last month. Few weeks ago, I've been here a lot recently. So, we're really excited um to give y'all kind of a lay of the land of how we're gonna do this, the steps that have to be taken. Very first step is we have to adopt the future land use map. So that'll be done when y'all adopt the comprehensive plan, when Jacob Martin and PMI are done, all edits are made. Um, once we get that done, that's when we'll actually start working on zoning ordinance specifics. That would be your districts that you wanna establish, regulations, specific rules, setbacks, those kinds of things. So today, just for the thought process, be very kinda big scope um because zoning is a lot more miniscule and land use is a lot more big. So you're looking at much bigger districts, um more big picture, think twenty, thirty, fifty years down the line kinda stuff. Okay? Um, so looking at this map to the left, it's gonna be the, I'm just gonna walk. Okay, yeah, looking, okay, so looking at the map on the left, this is the existing land use map that I've shown y'all a couple times now um from when the PMI team came out and did a land use inventory. Okay? Um, mind you, this is a little outdated, so some things may have changed, this was from middle of twenty twenty four. Um, so don't be taken aback if you're like, oh, I thought there was a house there now, there could easily be. Okay, and then the map on the right, that's what PMI drafted as y'all's future land use map. Um, so looking at y'all's highway frontage, y'all's main thoroughfares, um where housing development has been, where future plats have already been created. We took those into consideration and kinda drew up what we think West Tewahomi would look like in twenty to fifty years. However, that's our opinion, and it's not y'all's opinion, so we wanna hear what y'all want, what y'all think is gonna happen, um what y'all may wanna see change, all those kinds of things to help really divide this district a little bit differently um and build it out a little bit more. So, go ahead, start tearing it apart.
But the colors, you know, what are those?
Yeah, so yellow is your single family residential, so that would be a normal brick home. Your red is your commercial, so that would be any type of commercial business that you have in town. Blue is public, so that could be parks, city services such as city hall, fire, EMS, those types of things. Your light green is what we call recreational, so those are typically parks and or like RV park situations. Um.
Light in green, this or light?
Light green.
Light green.
Light green.
Yes, sir, sorry. Um, pink is what we consider mixed use, so that would be a mix of different things all in one area. Um, orange.
What it said, what is, what's mixed use?
Pink.
Green.
Yes. And then orange is multifamily. Um, and then the dark green is agriculture, or a better way to put it is land that when we did fieldwork, we didn't see much of anything on it, but we saw maybe it was being baled for hay. We use ag kinda loosely to some extent, if we saw feed troughs or water troughs or that it was being baled, we mark it ag. And then brown is your manufactured homes.
Brown is the existing home?
Manufactured, yes, sir. Oh, and I left out purple is industrial, sorry about that one, I forget that y'all have a little purple spot. Um, and so, huh? A little bitty spot, yeah. And so this was built from a meeting that we had with y'all whoa, way back in like September of twenty twenty four, it was, it was a while ago, so a lot of things could have changed. What I'm wanting to hear from y'all is, do y'all agree that this is what y'all think will happen?
Yeah, there's another one right there.
Yeah, here.
Uh, JD has, I can help pull them out, JD.
Francis is colorblind. He can't see, he ain't got a clue what that color is. Oh, really do that.
Okay.
So while James is reviewing that map, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, go for it.
Okay, so on the, you said, you stated that the yellow was for single family brick homes.
Yes.
So it doesn't affect current homes, it affects future homes, correct?
Zoning or future land use?
Well, you're saying, you're saying future land use, that would be your standard brick home.
Yes.
But that's not necessarily what, what we require.
That, well, not even required, future land use is not a binding document in of itself. It is more of a, this is what we would like to see happen, it does not have any say reinforcement ability.
Okay.
Um, however, when this turns into a zoning ordinance, yes, that would be true. So it has nothing to do with what's on the ground today, it has to be sold in order to change into that zoning classification.
Okay, and then on the, the, the large section of yellow that's right above the brown, that, if you compare the two maps, the, the large section of yellow is not included in the map on the left? Is, is that, does that mean it's not currently in the city?
Let me make sure.
City limits?
You're talking about right here, correct, sir?
Correct.
Yes, so this gonna take a step back, this is your city limits. This is your city limits, within this black outline, everything outside of that is your ETJ.
Okay.
As of right now, you can enforce um future land use into your ETJ.
Okay.
So that is why on the future land use map, we include the ETJ. However, keep in mind that with legislation going on right now, that could easily be taken away from us. Um, and we will keep an eye on that throughout this whole process and keep y'all informed of what's going on with that.
What? The big yellow that's in our ETJ that's not in our city limits?
Really, that's not.
Right.
Okay.
You're talking about in the middle?
I'm just asking. Well, I, I think, I think the city would definitely welcome those areas into our city limits, but it, it's gonna depend on the owners of the property.
Sure.
You have to have the majority, so, yes, I mean, to answer your question, we definitely want that in our city limits and anything that becomes obtainable to our city limits outside of our, you know, in our ETJ. So I'm, I'm glad that that was just brought up because that was one of the things I had in a middle note, but I was writing it down a while ago to make sure that ETJ was brought up because in my memory, that was something that we were planning, some of those meetings that we'd had in the past, so.
Yeah, so outside of that black outline is ETJ and also just another note, subdivision regulations can be enforced in your ETJ as well. You just have to have an interlocal agreement with county, um we've never had any problems with them. Y'all have subdivision regulations right now, but that's also what y'all will be adopting, well, awarding at the next council meeting. Um, so those will also be a discussion into this of how you want those to look like in the future.
So those green areas from to the east of yellow, so you said that, that's the dark green, that's agriculture, right?
Yes.
That's what, in the future?
In the future, yes, um hypothetically, we leave some of our land on this map as ag because from PMI's standpoint, we didn't see that much level of development that that would be taken away from ag. However, if y'all have desires, wishes, dreams, thoughts otherwise, we'd be happy to hear them. Um, it, it comes down to West Tewahomi is a lakeside community, most of what is there right now, even inside the city limits, is ag. And so trying to assume that that's gonna change in the next fifty to sixty years is a little.
What if somebody buys some of their land and says, I wanna build um single family homes, promoted family homes?
Yeah.
Will we do that?
So partially it's in your ETJ, so while you do have control to plan in your ETA, you do not have the right to enforce besides for subdivision regulations. Does that make?
I'm not agreeing, say that again.
So with future land use, you have the right to plan in your ETJ, so you have the right to make it known what you would like there, to inform developers of what you would like there, those kinds of things. However, from future land use alone, you do not have the right to enforce it such as you would with zoning. So in zoning, you can tell them, you're only allowed to have this there. You can't do that within your ETJ. So if somebody wanted to go there, y'all had it marked as ag, they decided they wanted to put residential there per se, they would be more than welcome to do so, they would just have to abide by y'all's subdivision regulations.
Right, okay.
And, and the other thing too, I don't know if it was caught when she said something about an interlocal agreement with the county. I, I think we may have one already, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But there, when something like that happens, so that's gonna be considered county, so that's gonna go to the county, it's gonna go to a county board, right? For them to develop that land, you don't have to get approved for that to go from ag to whatever classification. I, I actually, I attend those meetings, so I'm aware of this. So if, if somebody's gonna take, let's say it's forty acres of ag land and they wanna turn it into a neighborhood, they're gonna have to get that approved because it's the same thing as when we have people here wanting to change zoning of properties. They have to get it approved, go through the same process, letters get sent out to the neighbors, blah, 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 the whole ring and row. So, the reason why I'm bringing that up is, that's where if, if we don't have the interlocal agreement, we would get that, the county, we would be involved into those discussions and anybody here, whether it be council members, whomever, is more than welcome to go to those meetings and when the floor gets opened up, those people can talk. And so that could help, that could help kinda drive, right, or, or put that in a path of us saying, somebody here being involved, and if I'm still involved, I would definitely speak for the city as well and say, look, we have plans on this side, this side, and that side that things are going on, it would really be a bad thing for us to do whatever. Mobile homes in this area or, or, you know, and you just, you talk through those things as a group.
It also gives the ability for most of our cities that have subdivision regulations and an interlocal agreement with the county. Of course, depending how it's written and depending the relationship between city and county, most of the time, plats and things like that will come to y'all's P and Z for approval as well.
What if somebody buys the land and says, okay, I'm gonna be annexed into the city? And then they come to the city, not to the county, they don't have to go to the county then, right? They come to the city and say, we wanna be part of the.
Yeah, so if they annex into the city, they will come in as kinda what we show on the future land use map currently, they would either have to go in as a rezone or a planned development district, so that kinda gets really into the weeds of zoning and I will discuss that when we get that where, way. But that pretty much ends up saying that if, uh say a huge large development company came in, bought the property, said, I wanna annex into the city limits to have city water, et cetera, et cetera. They will sign a, they will go into a planned development with Shannon and that will pretty much write them their own district per se.
So that's allowed?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, yes, questions? I have one more though, that pink. At the very end, um, I'll show you here, so this, this, no.
So the purple.
The purple?
Yeah.
Where's the purple?
Industrial.
Industrial, okay.
Yeah.
There's no question.
The pink, the purple, and the orange were all informed by our last meeting about the land use map, so.
Is the purple or the box?
Yeah, that's why you were talking about that question, okay.
What I'm hearing is y'all are happy with the map. Right, so I feel like can't be right.
So we have, yes, that's the only industrial for us, right?
As of right now, yes, sir.
So this section right here was already redesigned, single family.
Okay, I will make that edit.
Yeah.
We definitely won't put it back to manufacturing.
Yes, understood.
Alright.
I'd like to see that changed to something, I'm just not sure. That's probably.
Yeah, I think everybody would.
I would like to see that go to something other than manufacturing.
No one in the far west, yeah.
Yeah, and the issue is that's, there's not a lot of actual real land there, I, I think the biggest majority of that's SRA land, so I'm not sure.
So, big chunk right here is SRA, that they don't let them put anything permanent on, the other problem is, this property goes like that, and there's a big creek that runs up here, so.
I haven't looked at a flood map for them, Chrissy, have you looked at a flood map for them?
Chad, you look like you got some questions burning up over there, what you got?
Is that in the?
What I wanted to suggest, changing it already, they changed to regular housing, it's not manufactured anymore, so, I believe lines are pretty much.
This may be a dumb question, but is there a difference between commercial and industrial?
What, sorry, say that again, I'm sorry.
This may be a dumb question, but is there a difference between industrial and commercial?
There is, so both in zoning and in land use, if you mark something as industrial, you are giving them a lot more rights to the land. So typically you don't have any noise, you know, how do I, so with commercial, you can, you know, size, noise, height, et cetera, et cetera, are all regulated. Within industrial, they're still regulated, but they're regulated to a much lesser extent. So typically when you zone something industrial, you should be expecting something like a concrete plant, a very loud something, um something that requires a lot of semi trucks going in and out, manufacturing, anything of that level versus commercial would just be your day to day grocery store, if that would make sense.
It does. Thank you.
So can we say instead of, can we say that light industrial?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, so when we do the zoning, that is probably what it would end up being, is light industrial, however on future land use, it just gets marched industrial and kinda.
I mean, because it's right next, it's right next to the water, right next to the two mile bridge, right on two seventy six, that would um, you know, if it was a concrete plant or something that had industrial trucks, you know, eighteen wheelers that pull out all the time, we would wanna put a light there, something that would reduce the, the, the traffic issues.
Yes, sir.
You know, the, the possibility of accidents.
And my understanding is what's going in there now is gonna be light industrial anyway, so we'll, we'll just go ahead and mark it light industrial for y'all's future zoning as well and that will say that.
With our zoning now, it could still fall into our commercial.
Yeah.
It's so light.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What's the difference between light industrial and heavy?
That depends on how the city wants to ride it, we have some cities that are really kinda sticklers on that, so like a machine shop would be light industrial. And then we have some cities that keep that for actual in more industrial purposes. Um, so it's kinda how y'all want to divide it, typically in our situation, we recommend that light industrial is anything that could possibly have to say in an odd way, additional insurance needed on the building, if that makes sense, so.
Hazardous materials.
Hazardous materials, things along those lines that would require the city to want extra regulations on it. Um, think of if you put industrial within a single family district versus light industrial type of thing, you'd want lesser hazardous materials, lesser noise, things of those areas.
That's probably what you need, Daniel, light industrial. You don't want someone to go and build a chemical plant.
Alright. I wouldn't want anything that goes to the water. I don't think they could, they probably would not be able to build a chemical plant that close to the water, there's other regulations that would.
Yeah, and also just for the discussion points, y'all are all informed, you know, we're talking about concrete plants and industrial, you know, these big things. Y'all can zone those out of y'all's cities technically in the use tables and say that they're not required, allowed at all. Um, so even though we're using that as an example for what industrial is, if that is not what the city wants, we can keep that from happening in the use tables to ensure public health and safety. Um, I have a question, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask it, I think I asked this way back when, but um, so right now, this orange is only here, we had discussed going ahead and allowing multifamily throughout the whole kinda what's already been plotted, is that still the understanding, still the agreement, still what's wanted to do multifamily throughout the whole, what they've already replatted discussion?
That's a thing for the cloisters.
Cloisters, right, yeah.
So in an effort to provide affordable housing, does multifamily like the cloisters or like that qualify us to be able to reduce other types of affordable housing?
I wouldn't necessarily say let's y'all reduce, that's a really kinda firm point on it, but it does give the city the ability to say, we do give an area for affordable housing. Here it is, type of thing, same thing if you have like section eight housing in your city, it gives the city a right to say, you know, we're, we don't put affordable housing here, we don't allow manufactured homes here because we have this affordable housing option here.
So the lot blazes public?
Yes, sir.
Is that the one I can hear, but what is all that?
Um, off the top of my head, it might take me a second, but I know one of them's city hall, one of them's the fire department. Um, I think the BFW we might have put under public at that time, which y'all can choose if y'all want that public or commercial, it kinda depends on how y'all, how y'all's BFW works. Um, some of it's parkland that was owned by the city. I, I would need to look at. Library, yeah.
What would, what's the public on the south side? The very first one we block. And it's public.
That one might have been incorrectly.
This is the Exxon. So that would be circle K.
There's a, what is this?
Yeah, so that should be commercial.
I'll fix that.
Is it a park?
Maybe, yeah, yes.
This should be the fire department, that would be city hall. And then what, what is this, the fire park?
Wish first, sure, why is it a park on the coast?
I'm pretty sure this is the library.
That's a park. Yeah, that's where the city has their park and the RV hookups.
Having said which one's fully gent, which one's.
Utilities, so that's where your water tank and land is located. Utilities, so that's where your water treatment land is located, right? Water treatment or water tower?
Is that the one where they got the house that was built on the property?
Yes, that's.
Water tower?
Yeah, and it's not considered a public.
All of that is one parcel, which, yeah, so for.
What's the reddish?
Do y'all own it or do y'all rent it? I'll get to it.
That's.
Most of it's SRA, isn't it?
Commercial.
Yes, that is.
I, I'm not so sure that like the fire department, I don't think the fire department goes that far back.
It, the building itself does not.
No, I mean even the property, because if I remember correctly, the way they did that, unless, unless they left, I don't know. But the fire department, that property was deemed to them by the property owner that's behind them. And it goes, and it, their property puts up closer to the back of the fire department. It doesn't go.
Yeah, is, are the churches considered public?
Yes, the churches are also considered public.
That's why, that would be what that is, because you see the two spots for fire department, right? There's two, two of the fire parts and the rest of them are church.
Okay, so the church is considered.
That's all, yes, that's called in property right here.
There you go.
Yeah, so the church and then that, that might be.
So then that property.
The answer to another one of those questions.
Makes sense.
And this right here, they're still planning on bringing the rest of this down in those spaces. So this would technically still be manufactured. It would be part of this development. That would need to change. That would still be manufactured.
And that's a change that we want.
Well, I mean, it's, it's.
It's a necessary.
Yes, this development that's been going on and there's been tons of meetings about that development. And one, I thought, I thought that was going to be moving pretty soon.
I seriously did too, but they've had a struggle to finish in phase one, they're finally finished. And phase one was already before I did. Three and a half years ago.
And it's manufactured housing and it's taken that long?
Yeah, there's something weird about how it's, money's released on it at certain times.
It's the development of the property too, is what's.
Yeah. But they are actually very evenly spaced and decent holding homes, like using mix of single and double. To find out if they're going to finish. What they planned on doing or if they're.
It'd be interesting to know if they do intend to continue on it, because if they don't, we might want to change it to something else.
Looking at the other manufactured districts, I know you said there's a part of the one to the south that's already SF. But are the rest of them, y'all are happy with the areas that they take up? I know we talked about this little portion out here. Y'all wouldn't want that to be manufactured, what would y'all like that to be in the future? I mean, even if it is in the floodway, even if it is a very hard to develop piece of land, if you had a dream developer come in, what would be the best fit right there in y'all's eyes?
Is that water access? Is it waterfront?
Yes, so this is right at Cove Road right here, which turns into North Shore. And this is, there's water all right there.
Yes, that one then. In my opinion, I, we need to take advantage of as, we need to take as much advantage of the lake property, lakefront property that we have.
And I, and I agree.
To get the most money for it, to get the most.
I mean, I would definitely prefer to seek to regular housing than.
Yeah, I mean, the fact of the matter is, you're not going to put that many in there.
Yes.
If we're being honest, so if I were guessing, there's probably what?
Right now?
I mean, I think it's. Right, but.
Twenty-five or twenty-six.
But that's on, what is it, three acres?
Honestly, I'd have to go look.
The mines packed in there, but you could probably get, time, eight? Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying, right, I'm not saying it could have happened, I'm not saying it could have happened, but.
Depending on how you lay them out.
SF one, what is our, what is our square footage, lot square footage?
Four thousand.
Okay, so SF two is.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred.
So we don't want to do any more SF two.
I was about to say, keep in mind all that's about to change.
Right, no, no, we're talking about changing those lot sizes, right? And then so SF one might be pushing it with the amount of properties that is, that is there.
But we came in with a happy ending and somewhere between, like our SF three is six thousand. So an SF one is four thousand and we came in somewhere like ten thousand.
James, James came up with something, we might think about multifamily. Multifamily with the, you know, with water access, a dock.
I mean, an arena or, you know, a farmhouse.
I mean, that could be something. Yeah, twenty-five or thirty units in there, you could, and that could be, that could be an upscale.
It could be.
And that's, that's a part of the lake that doesn't, it's relatively deep water too. When I say relatively, it's not.
I'll stand right here so you can.
They're allowed input, correct? And if they need a microfiling, they can. Oh, we're being awful quiet, it's like.
It's a, it's a workshop, so we're all here to talk and, and try to.
We're, we're got the, we want to hear ideas.
Put our visions together.
All I would say is that if, if we're trying to get rid of mobile home parks, why wouldn't we turn all that into future land use? I mean, that's better than mobile homes. I mean, if you want to get rid of them eventually, they got.
Well, now, hold on, we, we cannot get rid of them eventually, totally. I mean, if you go anywhere, you go to Irving, you go anywhere in, in the state, you're going to see them. They're, they're, you'll never get rid of them totally because.
Pretty much have them.
None of us want to fight that battle.
You just get to live where they are.
Yeah, so you're going to have them. I mean, the thing is, if, and we, we talked about this about four years ago. Make it light on ourselves, right? Instead of trying to come up with some crazy grand plan of things, where they're at right now, so like in the banner addition, it's mixed up. There's mobile homes, there's stick built homes, so that would be a good area to say, look, moving forward in that area, it's only going to be stick built homes, whatever, right? Whatever we're calling it. But, but I, I see what you were talking about because behind, or well, I guess just to the west of that's already multifamily. But you're going to have quadrants in our city that you're going to have. Honestly, we were talking about across the street at one point, at, at zoning that one where, uh, uh, rustic hits, right? So.
Yeah, we have that future plan for commercials.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, so that would be a zoning there. So you're not going to get rid of all of them, so right there where this one is at, um, what is that addition called that? That we were just talking about.
Red code.
No, 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 the one that hasn't completed yet.
Horizon.
Horizon, Horizon Estates, all that, you would almost leave that one alone, right? And it's kind of in the middle, the location is where it's at, but.
This is all.
It's away from the lake, so people, and if we start trying to stay down closer to the lake, to your point, that we start trying to set those zoning regulations to where it does become home, so that brings our, draws different people. It draws the people here and they'll say, yeah, we're going to build a house and it's like two blocks from the lake. These guys over here, hey, we're going to build a house or whatever and we're a block and a half from the highway. Well, who cares about the highway, right? Nobody's saying, I'm going to go move by the highway. Nobody's saying, right? Everybody's saying, I'm going to go move by the lake, go move by the woods.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
So this is already manufactured, but this one little strip right here is ag at the moment.
Okay.
Rather than make it manufactured.
Make it, yeah.
I'll shut up after this, last point, I'll make it. If these mobile home areas are fairly close to the state highway, that makes it a lot easier on the city as well, because when they start moving these things in, gosh, they tear up the roads. I mean, every time they take one down, every time they take one down Maze Lane, down Rabbit Cove Road, they tear culverts up, they tear ditches up, and guess what, they're gone. You're, I mean, you're not going to find it.
We just had one come in Vayner Edition and they picked the narrowest road with the most trees to go down and pour up a lot.
That's, it's great, so.
I also want to make the note, just because I don't know everyone's knowledge level on this, but to make it very clear, we use the term manufactured home, because manufactured home is what the state allows slash mandates, as it has to be above a certain year, certain quality to stay within standards. Mobile home, we stay away from, because that typically means pre that date. And also typically means trailer homes, things of that nature. Not to go against anything you said, just for understanding across the whole board. When we talk of manufactured division, we mean prefab homes that were brought in, single wides, double wides, not RVs.
Very good, very good point, very good point. It's all, it's old terminology, I guess, we get stuck in.
No, you're good, we, we still call them that too, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows.
So where do tiny homes fall in that?
That's a fun discussion.
I know, that's why I'm asking the question.
We have them currently in SF four because it's been a mixed, you know, it's not manufactured, it's not stick, it's not everything. We also have them in planned development, so it's only just.
So tiny homes kind of fall on y'all and where y'all would want them, and we can put them in any residential district. We can allow them in any residential district. Kind of falls with what the city wants and what the city's desires are.
That's more of an ordinance thing?
It's more of an ordinance thing, yes, sir.
Yeah, 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 well, I understand, I'm just, I was just asking the question because of the manufactured versus mobile home discussion.
So, and one thing to clarify, our tiny homes are a little different. Our ordinance requires them to be on permanent foundation, so they are actually considered real property. Where they are taxed.
So they're taxed, as it should be.
And that's how we will write it into the zoning ordinance as well. I don't think so, but we, we have time to, time to get to that. Yeah, and so we'll pretty much copy whatever y'all have into what we put, into what we write for zoning.
So there were the really deep commercials on the inside here, what was the thought process behind?
So our thought process, and Kristy, you're allowed to say anything if I'm incorrect, was that from discussions with the city, eventually for EMS purposes and for just city roadways, eventually this would become a major thoroughfare for the city, getting from the southern.
I see that one, that one's made, I was talking about the two up here, uh, next to the which called states. And the one that's way back almost to the lake, uh, on north side. What would be the, what would could possibly go there, would be that deep?
That is currently penny marked.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
So they already own all that?
That's penny marked property, yes.
Yeah, apologies, sorry, I was confused. Um, and yeah, and that's another thing that kind of, this will be a thing with zoning, this will be a thing with land use, it's parcel based. So if a, if a certain company owns or a certain person owns a whole lot of land, that whole land gets zoned that amount, which isn't always fun, makes it hard for some things in the future, but that is how it works.
Is that true of the two pieces, that are the deepest part on the south side as well, where the cloisters are?
Here.
Maze Lane.
Uh, to the left, yeah, those two pieces, are they both?
No.
Also owned by the same, are they, is that all one?
Yeah, so they're all one parcel, but right now it is ag. That kind of goes into my discussion, I was saying originally, when we were looking at this, we viewed this as a major thoroughfare for the city in the future. And typically along your major thoroughfares, you do plan for commercial development.
Makes sense you'd have commercial development.
Yes.
And these right here are actually owned by the same people that went and owned the cloisters.
Of course, that can be changed if y'all see otherwise, we just thought that would make the most sense tax wise for the city to be able to use those as commercial properties along that thoroughfare.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, I mean, the city is going to want to have commercial property, right? Yes, at some point, there's going to be more stories hopefully or more whatevers, and I mean, we're going to write out property pretty soon.
And this, this was a dream world of your two city planners that y'all have on this team. This would make a beautiful downtown road eventually, if y'all wanted to have, if somebody wanted to come in and do like an actual downtown development with, you know, two store buildings on both sides with parking in the front. Beautiful location, but that's a dream world, you'd have to have the dream developer, et cetera, et cetera.
Big checkbook.
Yeah, big checkbook, but marketing reasons, EDC reasons, if y'all agreed with that, if it's what we put in zoning slash in future land use, it gives the EDC something to market that to be. And that's just a planning discussion, that's not an actual, in writing anywhere.
I have thoughts like that helps your developers and helps you acquire, you know, higher end or better developers too, if they know you've got some plans. For a good downtown, it would be a commercial place.
Yeah, true.
On the left, down by the Dumal Bridge, which is currently manufactured. Sabine owns it, is that something we would want to do commercial or is that something we would want to leave open to recreational?
Just recreation.
Down here, the big leg.
Oh, the red, okay, sorry, got it.
So primarily this.
Okay.
The boat ramp here, is that something we want commercial, do we want to limit that where they can't do recreational anytime in the future? Or do we want to leave that open where they can potentially put in something like what would one park have?
They could want that family, you know, they have the lake view, it's a lot of crispy property.
Um, just.
It's on the lake, how do they do that?
Yeah, um.
It's owned by the lake authority, can they do that?
No, that's.
Sabine will allow it, it's permanent foundations now.
I don't think, I don't think Sabine would allow that. I think, if I remember correctly, where she's about that very tip.
The very tip is Sabine.
Yes.
Yes, it is, it's Sabine now.
For close to the two seventy six, you can do one that family then.
Absolutely not. I think we would be taking ourselves backwards, in my opinion, this is my opinion, I'm just speaking out loud my opinion. Anything that touches two seventy six should be commercial property.
And that is.
Sabine actually.
We don't, we don't have very much of it, so, you know, and, and just in, in my, my personal feelings, who we want to live, I mean, you know, when I see people living on the highways, I'm like, man. I, I think about that, I think about those apartments that are on I thirty right at Lake Ray Hubbard, that are over on the left hand side, and I think, oh my gosh, if I could, if I had to look out my window and see, I can see Lake Ray Hubbard on this side and I see I thirty on this side, I'd never want to.
There's going to be a Sabine.
I just can't imagine.
Yeah, because see.
And, and I, and I, I think you're absolutely right, I think we'd be better served with something that was, um, more recreational there than anything, that, that would be a great place for a, for a couple of restaurants that were on the waters. You could come up to by boat or, um, that you can drive to from the highway. There are lots of things you could do there, there are recreational retail and restaurant in my mind, that would be better suited for the lake view.
Yeah, um, just for a second, I want to discuss what we mean by recreational. So recreational is a new thing that we've created within PMI recently, um, because of, in all honesty, y'all city in the last meeting we had with y'all. So recreational, the way it is written in our ordinance means that it would be available for RV parks, not long-term living, short-term only, that it would be allowed for small commercial developments such as lakeside communities, bait shops, tackle shops, kayak rentals, things like that, and for small restaurants. And then other things as well, under conditional use, if they brought it to council and council approved it. So that development that you're talking about of, you know, someplace where people can go and do some commercial activities, go kayaking on the lake, things like that, would fall into the recreational area.
To a marina that allowed for an RV and a boat and a restaurant and kayak rentals and all of that on that point makes sense.
Short-term stay.
Short-term stays.
Right, I mean, that makes a hundred and ten percent sense.
So would y'all prefer to see that red as recreational in the future? We, we have to change, it is all one parcel.
So the golf course is right behind the paint, right? And so that would. The pink, then the brown and the green, that's, that's the golf course. So the brown cuts in between them?
Yes, sir, as a parcel right now. Now, I don't know what agreements have been made, this is all parcel data, so what we pulled from the, the appraisal district for the county. So I don't know if there's any agreements that have been made between property owners that allow things, but as the parcels lay, that is how it looks.
But, man, see, I did not realize that that property cut. The hardest golf course was, golf course stands for recreational.
Yeah, right now it's undeveloped.
So then making it all recreational.
It's already, it's already recreational.
I'm sorry.
And it looks like that pink is carved out for multi-use or whatever, so it makes perfect sense that that would be recreational in addition to the golf.
What about this?
This is about to be a mechanic shop, so that should be commercial.
In reality, I think.
You just want to make that commercial action, that whole line of what, bus of furniture? You just want to make that commercial actually, or that whole line of what sub furniture?
This is already divided now.
That's true, so.
Technically is.
It may, it may be better suited. Be commercial. Because then, if you put it recreational, it may be limited, but. The only thing you're losing, I'm hearing everything. You can put any kind of big school or, you can do everything without the RVs or the commercials. The only thing you add with recreational is you can do all of that, but you also can do RV. Short term RV, that's what I'm, that's what.
This is commercial, I'm really up to you.
This is also commercial, but she's semi business. She's because you guys have so many different things going in.
Right, but there's nothing behind her.
So, yeah, so what would change with the ordinance? And hopefully kind of the gung ho-ness of council and P and Z whenever we do all this, is that short term stays will be able to be enforced by a code enforcement officer at that point. So you have legal ability to go in, and if somebody's been hooked up for over X amount of days, code enforcement or whatever, for whatever avenue y'all see or y'all attorney sees fit, can go in and get rid of it.
Do we not have that ability to do that?
To do what? Sorry, I was.
No, you're good. To get rid of, enforce short term rentals, short term stays for long.
We do not, but I'm working on that.
Okay, that's what's good. Question, I'll need you to answer that.
It'll be in the zoning ordinance as well. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
He's asking why the commercials come so far back right here.
It's, it is purely because of that is just the shape of the parcel.
No, there's nothing there.
Yep, yep, there's nothing, so this is just future land use. So right now, there's nothing there.
No, this is all, uh, auto office up to here. Up to this point, it's all office.
Yes, so whenever we're looking at this on our side, and I apologize because there's probably some inconsistencies on this map. Y'all's county has not the prettiest parcels because of the Sabine River Authority owns so much of it. Um, so from our side, this is golf course one hundred percent. Whenever you look at it on, on the central appraisal district, it is owned by the golf course, et cetera. This parcel right here.
There's no parcel. There's no parcel there.
There, there is a parcel there. It just might not be one that y'all are aware of. It is one that is probably owned by the Sabine River Authority, and there is agreements that have been made many, many moons ago that allow for development from here to here. Does that make sense?
Because, you know, we know that we own, this actually touches the, the golf course.
Well, yes, I understand that it touches the golf course, but that doesn't necessarily mean that is where the parcel line is located.
You think there's another parcel in between?
There is a lot of parcels all over.
What she, what she's going off of is what she's able to find within our, our CAD system, the Hunt County CAD system. And so I, I, I caught the comment that she made well ago about she's not sure if there's agreements or whatever.
And she was at S R A owns it.
Yes.
Because.
Oh, I have that up right here.
I understand what you're saying. The golf course goes all the way back.
To that, uh. No, 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 I'm saying that, that, the brown. That doesn't indicate there's no parcel, the off line touches the.
Parcel number.
You're talking about the, the red?
Right there is a parcel. And you see where the blue lines lie? So this is that red slash brown that you're discussing is where this blue line is located. And that is all one parcel owned by the Sabine River Authority. So even though, yeah, and you can even see it on here where that green goes down. So even though you can see the green does go down all the way to that mixed use development, the Sabine River Authority still technically owns a parcel that overgoes that.
Well, I think, I think Sabine owns it, but I think the, I think, uh,
Okay.
Whatever her name is, has at least, she has the lease through Sabine.
Yes.
The, the lady that owns Rainbow, what is it called? Rainbow Co. She has that lease of that parcel of land through S R A. And if I'm just gonna be honest with you, the people that, I don't know how long the quarry's owned, have owned that.
I think they have like a hundred year lease.
I, I think they've owned it for quite some time. And I know Mr. Bill was an avid golfer. And there was probably some agreements at some point, sometime down the road, a handshake says, hey, I don't care if you put a hole over here, or if you put a green over here, or you put a fairway over here, it doesn't matter to me. I'm never gonna use this land. We're only gonna use this land. That's, I think that's the comment that you made that I picked up on. But that, that's not for us to figure out yet. That's, that's somebody else's conversation or, or task to have. Um, all we can do is try to plan forward and look at the property lines that are laid out that are showing on the CAD systems and whose ever property it is, that's not, that's not on, on us to figure that out. So I, I, if I'm understanding correctly, on the recreational use, really truly, all you're gonna, all you're gonna lose is probably the, the, the stays and the RVs, right? The RVs, the daily use RVs or whatever it's called.
So the city, the only negative impact would be short term rentals, ma- ma- making sure that those are maintained. And then also technically your commercials are smaller commercials rather than a bigger commercial.
But if we, if it was to be less commercial, you can still do anything and everything you would be able to do within the recreational aside from. The RV side of it.
That's true.
And if it made, if it made a, uh, a difference between developers doing that or.
They could get a reason.
We could get a reason, sure.
Yep, you could get it rezoned. The only thing that I would say one side versus other, just as a thinking point, was that if you were to make it commercial, would you be happy with a grocery store, something bigger commercial being on it? That's the only technically like negative to zoning it commercial over recreational.
Absolutely, why not? When is H T B moving in? Do you have a grocery store you're talking about?
I do not, I'm sorry. If I did, I, I would make a lot of my clients more happy.
Crush the dream.
So the decision was leave that commercial for now, and if in the future.
I mean, that, that's for the council to weigh in on that too, but I, I mean, I believe, I believe we would be great with like that.
I agree with Kevin. I think let's leave out, if somebody brings in a development that has, that would like to use RV short term rentals, let them bring it to us.
He's still trying to figure out the colors all the way around.
Actually like tooth colors.
Oh, no.
So what else we got? We ready to get Kristy up here?
As I say, if y'all are happy with those only couple of changes, Kristy can come on up. Um, I will go back and we'll make the changes that we discussed. Um, kind of present it to y'all again before adoption. It'll get adopted at the same time the full comp plan will. Um, and just keep in mind, this is what informs your zoning map in the end, so.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Of course, of course.
Passing the mic.
Well, I don't have like a presentation type thing. We, we did that last time then.
What? Oh, my God.
Straining a little differently so everybody had max.
Um, this is an opportunity really, I needed, you know, if you guys have any feedback on changing the priorities in the comp plan, if there were anything in the draft of comp plan that you went through that needed to be changed. So that's, I mean, my primary goal is to find out, you know, how we make this a final comp plan.
Yeah, I think we have to, you know, some of the things, I'll send out some, like, you know, comments.
I did not get that. I did not get that, so I just listened to you.
So on page eighty two, if you go into page eighty two, table seven point three, seven point four, seven point five.
Is this the right page eighty two we look at?
One of the tables, seven point two, seven point three.
I can't read that far up there.
And it's now, yeah, it should be down toward the end of that, so you've got your goals, and then you're gonna hit down.
Seven point two, seven point four. The recommendations are generic, right, non-functional. So for example, the first one, that says replace non-functional colvers. You're gonna be, each one's other.
So in the comp plan, it's a comprehensive plan. It's not a capital improvement plan. Okay, and so the difference between those two is the comp plan is gonna say, here are your big buckets and your big areas that you need to fix. We moved into a capital improvement plan where you lay it out for the next ten years, and then you get into the specific streets you want fixed, the specific culverts you want fixed, and it's a line item that, that then we have lengths, we have cost estimates and everything that goes specifically to those direct areas that you want to fix. The next step after that then is you take the capital improvement plan and it leads into your impact fee study. Where then you say, you know, here's all your line items, capital improvements that you want to do. We're gonna marry that with, um, your zoning ordinances and your development that, that you expect to see coming in over the next ten years. And then, you know, the, the state allows you to take up to half of that capital then and charge that back as impact fees. So it's kind of a tiered process as you've got your comp plan down to capital improvement, down to impact.
Yeah, I get it, but then, this is like copy and paste kind of a thing then, you know, but it doesn't, what if you don't need that much money to do it, you know? At least, there's some kind of specifics to say about these things appear to be in bad shape, you know, this number one fifteen and seventeen.
Yeah. I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize. That's a really bad habit of mine, but, um, Derek went through and did all of your drainage analysis. So he has done a drainage analysis. He's looked at the flow and everything through every single one of your culverts. Um, and so we could, let me go back and double check with him as far as a list of which culverts, because that's what drove us to, we just didn't pick out two hundred and fifty thousand.
You know, so that's why we can sit down and say, I mean, Kevin and, you know, people like, they'll know that this is a priority, this is not that much of a priority. Then we can at least do that. Otherwise, you know, we're looking at this, this, you know, you gotta, you gotta make the city better.
Right.
Okay, so I, I think I understand kind of where you were asking, what you, where you're going at, James, was, um, this comprehensive plan is not gonna give us a day to day task. This of items, um, to, to go around and pick up and put in our shopping cart. This is gonna give us a grand scheme of saying, look, here is your health checkup on your city, okay? So moving forward, what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to change your diet, you're gonna have to work out a little bit more, blah, blah, so on and so forth. So we'll give you a dietary plan, we'll give you a workout plan, you're gonna have to start taking these medicines. I'm trying to put this in layman's terms if it makes sense. So if I understand correctly, the biggest importance of this comprehensive plan is to bring everything to light, but not under the microscope. So it brings everything to light, but that what it does is us having this comprehensive plan when it comes time, because the city will never be able to fix the drainage in this, in this, in this city or the culverts in this city without help. And what I, what I mean by help is government help by grants, by way of grants. This plan gets us way up on the list of qualifications for those grants because they see that our city has done some work, not just going out and asking for a handout. They see that our city has done some prep work, and they say, well, do you have a comprehensive plan? That's what we see a lot of times. I think you've seen it in a grant that you were looking at. They ask these things. You can still apply for the grant without having it, but when you have it, these guys stay over here and we get moved over here, closer to the.
So what I'm saying is slightly different, Kevin. Um, they came up, came up with that two hundred and fifty thousand, let's look at these are pretty bad. I mean, that's what she said, you know, these things look bad, we, you know, we spent a few days over there, we know that this is, we just need, need that list. That way, the study is done, what if we have to do it again? You know, study is done, they got the information, just give it to us and say, these things look pretty bad, you know? That's all we need, I mean, you know.
These chunk items as far as the cost too is done. That's where this is a draft, and that's why we're coming back to you guys is, you know, we've got it listed one to ten years here. I mean, what as a city, I'm, what I, the biggest thing for me is that I needed you to look at this and say, there's no way, you know, or yes, we can handle this, or no, we can't. You know, hey, we're willing to commit, you've got two point two five, you know, we got two and a quarter million here for, for upsizing culverts. You know, we, we can't do that over ten years. Let's minimize, let's lower that down to a million or something. You know, that's, that's where this comprehensive plan comes in, is how much money can you spend for these things?
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, what I'm saying is that if you know some glaring problem, just tell us that and then we can at least make it a priority, you know? But you have spent the time, you have been there, you know it.
So, yeah, I mean, our assessment when we drove through was. To make sure that, you know, to, to kind of give, like he said, a health check. You know, we walk by, how many culverts do you guys have? How many of them need? You know, just from looking at them, how many of them are, are gonna need to be undone and whatnot.
Make it as a penalty, say, okay, this is what we found. At least we can take it and tell them, maybe we spent some time or money on this.
I can, I can, I think, I don't think I'm speaking out loud, turn, I can tell you we're not gonna get that. Not out of this study.
They know it, they know it, they know that some of them are.
Well, no, I, I think what you're looking for.
Jen, like a bigger picture, we know, you know, if everything is flowing, does it have a way to get to the lake, you know? That's why I said I could double check with Derek to see the level that, in which that drainage analysis was done on each of those culverts, but that's usually like he was saying, the next kind of step in the capital improvement plan where we can really nail down which ones and get into the design of it, what size you need and stuff like that.
Was it raining when they came out and did all that?
Rainy, no. Raining?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't think it was.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if there is anything, that's not wasted. You know, just give it to us, uh, so we can use it, you know? I understand it's a big comprehensive plan, but when you do anything, then you might just say, okay, this is bad. Just tell us.
Well, no, no, yeah, we're not hiding anything. We're not keeping it, you know.
Even though it's a comprehensive plan, we can give it to you. No, 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 we can give it to you.
No, 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 that's why I like.
If there's something, you know, just tell us.
Absolutely. I'll double check with Derek. Like I said, he did all the drainage stuff, so we'll see, you know, to what level that scrutiny goes down to.
Just playing to save some time and money.
What was your next question you asked?
Hold on. Okay, there's another place to say we agree with. And the same thing with colvers, you know, some, some of the companies you're replacing, you can just say, you know, when we walk around, if you roll around, you meet.
I gotta say.
At least we know that, you know, we don't have to drive around again to find, you know, just tell us, at least things look bad. And then on page forty, it says, um, where we want, how much, how much should we contract water supply with S R A? So you, you're saying that we gotta increase the contract for water supply? How much more?
Well, when you guys, that's, you're gonna be watching your growth for that, right? So we've got some growth projections for you guys, and we have you the, the regulatory requirements from T C E Q, you have to have point six U P M per connection. And so those are real connections, those aren't projected connections. So, you know, we watch those projections that we've done, and then you guys keep an eye on those exact numbers of, of, you know, new developments, you watch the developments coming in, and we, you know, that's how we plan for those going forward. Um, and it, you know, we project those out in a, in a smaller timeframe, you know, and that's what helps you guys. I mean, we, we can go in and calculate those when you guys need them as far as, you know, what you need, but, I mean, it's easy to know from a, from a regulatory standpoint, you have to have point six U P M per, per connection.
Yeah, we're not smart enough to say, okay, yeah, so that means so much more we have to con, you know, contract. You just tell us. You could, when, when does our contract end, you know?
I actually don't know when your contract ends, when your first contract is usually going on until.
I don't, I don't mean to cut anybody off, but I still think that you might be severely misunderstanding what this study is. This, this study is only to develop the plan in which we will take these five, ten, whatever year plans that are put into place. Then we're gonna, now hear me out. Then we're gonna take that plan and say, we're gonna do the culverts, right? So we're gonna go, we're gonna go to him and get him to the final engineering. And he's gonna go in, he's gonna dig in and take our plan and say, okay, this is a really good plan, let me follow this plan. He's gonna use that as his plan to come back and engineer the drainage and the culvert work. Gonna take her, the, the plan for this growth and say, look, we're growing to this point. She's gonna follow that same plan. This is by far and away, not anything's gonna tell us down to the minute detail of work and or dollar that this city will be spending. It's giving us a general plan in which to follow.
I get it, I get it, Kevin.
I promise you, you don't, because I'm listening to what you're saying, and, and what, what you, the questions you keep asking, you're wanting the finite detail down to the task of which culvert to replace and or how much, you know, how much is it gonna cost, or how much do we need to increase?
Maybe the last piece, yes, I agree about the, you know, the contracted amount of work and that, that's what I understand, but for the other things that what I mentioned, whether if you know something, just tell us. So there's no, there's no harm if they know that, okay, this particular culvert is bad. Just tell us. Don't, don't include in the, in, if it's a problem, don't include in the contract, just give us a piece of paper saying, okay, this is what we found. in the contract, just give us a piece of paper saying, okay, this is what we found. All, all I'm saying is that if there is information that we can act on, use.
We're not withholding any information.
No, no, they're, they're not going to withhold any information, but, but what I'm saying is their preface of work and what they were doing was not to list that we had a bad culvert on the corner of X and Z road, that they, they weren't taking notes into that fact. What, what they did was they would go down our roads and they would say, okay, this road has a twelve inch culvert, this road has that culvert and they could see damage. I don't think there was pictures taken or any notes taken saying that a culvert needs.
What if they have done it? If they haven't, give it to us, if they haven't done it, that's fine with us, that's what I'm saying, if they have it, give it to us. But we don't have to say, no, they don't have it, you know, if they have it, give it to us, they don't have it, say, I don't have it.
Help me understand what you think that we have.
What's that?
Help me understand a little bit more about what you think we have. Just, just for my.
I, I was an engineer, you know, I have done enough studies, actually, but, you know, when I walk around, I see, okay, something is pretty bad. You know, I make an order of it and tell you this is pretty bad, you know, I still make a plan saying that, okay, you know, we gotta do all these things, but I can give you, you know, in my observations, I can tell you this is bad, I saw it, you know, I saw that, and I, you know, going around, this is good. I can give you some kind of pointers, some kind of information, I may not have to put it in the, in the, in the script for, but I can tell you, okay, this is what I saw. If you have it, give it to us, it doesn't add any more work to you, you know? You don't have to hide behind the fact, it's just comprehensive. If there's anything, give it to us, if there is nothing, don't give it to us.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
So what you're asking for is if there's some field notes that we could use to go out and send people out to do some work?
That's what I'm saying, if it's there, give it to us, if it's not there, don't give it to us.
Just make sure I understand, I make sure I bring it all so I understand what you're saying and everybody out there understands, I just don't want us to think that. Anybody to think that we're asking for something that's secret, field notes is what you would be looking for, that they use to gather their information to make their report.
So I drove around and did half your culverts, Landon did the other half. I took pictures for location purposes and I would have known it if there was anything catastrophic.
If you don't have it, that's fine, yeah.
But I'll take and see if there's anything else that's beneficial for you guys.
Well, you can understand, you know, this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If there's something really bad, you saw it, just say, I saw it.
If there was something really bad, we would have put it in here.
Well, that's, that's fair enough, but I, I have to ask that question.
Okay.
You got more, keep going, that's what we're here for.
So this grant information, you guys can do the grants, you say, right?
When you say do the grants? We work with PMI on a lot of the funding stuff and so they work with us and that's, we walk through the grant, the grant funding process together with you guys.
Don't we already have the block grant? I remember something in a council meeting several months back where this was going to be a future grant we were working on, but it's kind of a difficult grant, it's one thing, you know, because people actually have to move out of their homes for a year in order to have a house demoed and rebuilt for them to live in.
Yes, that's already, that's already an opportunity, but that, that, there is a very strenuous checklist of requirements.
And one of them is they have to find somewhere else to live for a year and they may not have that money to spend on a place to stay for a year. And that's one of the things that makes it not beneficial to the people that actually need it.
Right.
Except that for resilient, either D.
Yes.
Either D. I think Hunt County is excluded from it anyway.
Okay, so resilient community program has about four or five different grants under the same abbreviation. So RCP planning, the RCP planning grant, yes, Hunt County is omitted from that or sadly y'all would have gotten this grant, this comp plan done for much cheaper. But that was, y'all have been omitted, y'all were not part of a federally announced disaster. However, there's multiple other grants named RCP that are around the same thing, that mean resilient community program or resilient something else program or et cetera, et cetera, the state likes using the words resilient that are under there, that like Shannon announced, there are a few housing ones. We listed those in the housing section from our knowledge of what grants are out there. So if there's any that y'all are like, hey, this one doesn't really work for us, that's fine, we can take it off. If I remember correctly, how we wrote that is some of those weren't necessarily, hey, this city needs to go after this grant. Some of those, from the city's standpoint, it makes sense to just, one time on your website, or maybe have a housing section or a possible grant section on your website where you say, hey, these housing grants are out there if you're in need. Well, it's not necessarily something that the city has to go out, write the grant administration and do all the things. It is good ethics towards the city to be sharing those things with your homeowners, if that makes sense. I mean, all of us know that the requirements for some of those housing grants are very tough and not the easiest, but you're still being transparent to your community that they're available.
I got one more thing, on, on page thirteen, talk about standard deterioration and dilapidated structures. What do the other cities do in those situations, what, what kind of remedies are there?
Yeah, I think we talked about that in the goals section to some extent, but I can definitely go, I can discuss it now and go into more detail in the plan itself. So your standard structure is, of course, you don't really want to get rid of that at all, we have definitions for all three in the plan. Deteriorated means that it's kind of, it needs a facelift, so cosmetic changes, nothing serious, that's typically put on the homeowner type of situation. However, dilapidated would be that the structure is failing, that there's a hole in the roof that it probably shouldn't be inhabited. Cities go about this different ways, the biggest one is code enforcement, so when we gave Shannon that structure map forever ago, and once y'all actually get more through this comp plan, it gives code enforcement, the city, et cetera, et cetera, the ability to go out there and say, hey, you go against our, our policies or you are a health and wellness safety hazard, et cetera, et cetera. I say, I'll go with a grant assault, please contact your attorney before you make any actual announcements to a property owner, make sure that you go through it the proper legal process, but that is how it is handled in most of our cities. They view that map of standard deteriorated, dilapidated as a very high and very valuable map, just because it gives the city a, instead of y'all having to go look at them, we went and looked at them and these are the ones y'all can kind of automatically go out there and if the attorney approves, put a note on the door that this has the potential being condemned, et cetera, et cetera, or you have six months to do something. Or it, it's one hundred percent up to the city what level they want to take with that. We have some cities that take that as a positive per se, so they find out that they have some condemned, some homes that are, you know, uninhabitable or very bad shape, sometimes that's the city reaching out and if it's a lifelong person that's lived here, even if it's someone that's short and just fallen on some rough times, giving them those housing grants, letting them know that there's options out there and that's kind of the more like first step of trying to be communal. And then we have some city, some of those properties, you might go out there and find out, no one's paid taxes on it in fifteen years.
We have a lot of those.
And in those situations, guess what, go through the process to make that property and clean it up and do your thing with it. And then some of them is going to be a property owner that just doesn't care and then that's when you have to go more the legal route of you are going against public health and safety standards.
Which is what we just said that, you know, we need to get for.
I got one more thing.
No, go.
Page seven, that's a quite sharp. There. Can you put the percentages next to it, otherwise it's just hard for you to understand.
Yeah, go ahead and put the percentages, yeah. I think the only reason why they weren't included is it makes it very hard to read, like both ways, they're hard to read, let's be honest, when there's that many sections, but we can go ahead and put the percentages down beside it as well.
Some of them are a little colorblind, you know?
Yeah, I completely understand, we can go ahead and add those.
Now, are you saying, are you saying the percentages would be listed up there on the left side or?
Yes. We'll list them on the left just for ease of reading.
It's not, no, this color, I can't even, I don't know.
There's a lot of colors there, I understand. It was hard to build it and make them actually match each other, so, yeah, we'll put them either in front or at the end of each statement.
Basically, you bet.
Cool.
You don't have it, I guess.
So you guys are good with the priorities then for the water and sewer, the street recommendations?
We gotta go through Chad's, you see that piece of paper there with all this stuff? I thought that was your list under your phone.
No.
Were there any questions about the water or the sewer or those types of projections or costs that were there?
What kind of recommendations can we make on the water sewer and priorities?
Yeah, the priorities that we had on there, let's scroll up to this, wrong way, sorry, the other way, down. Let's see what page, try sixty-two, somewhere around there, yeah, it's going to be farther down. So this is wastewater, average daily, let's keep going down, so at the bottom of every section, keep going, keep going, till you find like tables that say zero to one, five years, or zero to five years, there we go. Oh, wait, no, no, that would keep going, sorry.
Just kidding.
I don't have my glasses on.
Keep going.
Keep going, keep going. There we go, so phase one, right, so phase one, we talked about in here about rehabilitation for man, three, three manholes. So we had a previous list that you guys had of manholes that needed to be worked and we double checked that with the program, the, the projects that we've done in the past for you, removed obviously the ones that have been upgraded, so there's still three remaining that needed to be done. Rehabilitate three lift stations and then perform smoke and testing line inspections, so that, obviously that's a generic one. The smoke testing and the line inspections, that's something that you guys can do just to give you a better idea for more line items on specifics that need to be done. And so that's how each one of these tables are, are built at the end, is phase one, two and three. Phase one being something, what you guys would be willing to do within the next five years and then sit, five, sorry, six to ten, right, one to five and then six to ten and then eleven to twenty. And so at the end of each one of those, for water, for sewer, for streets, drainage, that's how they were set up, so those big buckets and planning.
You prioritized them already, right? What do you have to do?
Well, we, these are things that you can't, these are the things that we would suggest, like, the reason that we do this, if you look in zero to five, we've got some things, little things going on in there and testing and then, but the big one is down in year six, construct a treatment plant for your expansion. So that was the big picture of, of doing those things, where are those big items coming in the next twenty years that you guys need to plan for? Right, manholes and stuff like that, those are little things that can be done at any time, but right now, we've got a big one in about six years, you guys are going to need an expansion to your sewer plant. And that's where these, that's where, that's the primary purpose of these types of plans, you know, or the big hurdles that you need to, that you need to plan for. What kind of PIFs, what kind of funding can you put in, you know, what kind of, if you guys, grants and funding aren't a thing that's going to come up and bonds to your city and that's, you know, that's where you guys come in for planning those types of things. So scroll up to water should have the same thing, so maybe fifteen pages above or something? I happily slept after being done with this for a while. Water, I got more specific on because we went over, we, it was easier to go through some specific things that, that the city had been dealing with, problems that they've been dealing with. So this is all your projection pro, profile.
That's your open, it went so much longer.
You're near the water system plan, we should submit your handles, keep going and then your table should be right. Okay, so within one to five years, these are after talking to the public works department and the stuff that they had been dealing with recently, these were the specific items that they said, hey, this is a priority, I mean, we sit down with a big map and we said, where are your problems? You know, and they, what is the biggest priority, because we, I mean, there's several times and we, we do it just fine, where we go through and we, we put our recommendations out there, but anytime we can get as much feedback from y'all to make it, you know, more personal and, and direct for you guys, we do. And so we went through a lot of the water stuff because that's one of your primary pain points. You know, I mean, so much time and energy from your water department and your public works department is dealing with leaks that, you know, it was easy for them to say, this is where we're having problems, we have pressure problems in this area, we need these line upgrades. And so we just went through the CAD files and listed out the lengths and said, you know, if you're going to do them, here are the, here are the big sections that you need to do.
So those are in, in the order of what you see as being the biggest problem?
In conjunction with the public works department when we were working, yes, that's how we prioritized it for, yes.
And same thing for the, for the drains, for example?
Yeah, we didn't have as much information, much as feedback on the drainage.
Right.
You know, a lot more with the water, a little less with the sewer. And then drainage is just not usually something that a lot of people squawk about unless you have, hey, you got.
Right, exactly, major pooling areas and stuff like that. So who does the work if they come up with a plan, who's working on that, that's the word, so.
Yes, anything in the state of Texas that's over fifty thousand dollars.
This, this plan will not, yeah, well, yeah, there probably will be much from this plan that we will actually carry out because there's really no finite task identified in this plan. Now, when we start saying drainage, right, and attacking the drainage, then we'd say, look, we were supposed to do this much drainage within five years, ten years, fifteen years, whatever, so then us as a city will have to come together and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna stay on our plan and we're gonna, we're gonna get some drainage done this year according to our comprehensive plan. We'll have to all get together, start talking about that, where is it going to be, is it going to be that side of town, this side of town, that side of town, whatever, we're going to start somewhere, at least we say we have actually stayed on our plan and we achieved some drainage this year. Same thing with this, we stay on our plan, we achieve thirty-one thousand five hundred feet of pot that we put on our plan, we're going to achieve that, but that will all have to be attained by going out and either getting grants or bonds or whatever, right? Because we all know that the budget of the city is not going to accomplish any of these goals.
I mean, the thirty-one thousand feet, they're, they're, yeah, is that what I'm, thirty-one thousand, right?
Yeah, thirty-one thousand.
You know, it's a two million, two million dollar project.
Yeah.
And so that's.
So for us to see some success here, what, the money's going to come first, right?
Yes.
It's like six miles.
Where, where do you see, where, where do you think we would go to be able to get something going, to shoot this?
Um, that's where you can help in too with some of the funding stuff, I mean, primarily we do a lot of the, we've done CDVG and TWDB, we put PIFs in for you guys each year for sewer problem, projects or water projects and we use this, you know, as a guide for that, you know, and it's, we write them very generically so that if they get in and you guys get chosen to be, I mean, they've got criteria and everything and all that, but if you come up to get it, it's written vague enough, it's written clear enough to get the point across that you can get funding and vague enough that you can be able to do what you want to do with it. So like the CBVG grant that we're going to right now, you know, they were given fifty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, I think. You know, and we put in their SCADA improvements and water treatment improvements, plant improvements. So then we could sit down, once you guys got approved for the funding, we could sit down, okay, how am we best, are we going to do that? You know, where is our pain, biggest pain problems that we had in the water treatment plant? A lot of things that rise to the top are your violations, you know, what have you been a violation with, so that's why we've got those two pumps being replaced because they're too small, so that's, that's what I know about funding and then I know you guys have a little bit broader depth on, on looking for.
So we have a little bit broader, we have a lot of different state agencies that we look into, so there's TDA, there's GLO, there's, you know, even the Texas Department of Wildlife, that's not about sewer and water, so we won't talk about that right now, but we, we go the whole nine yards and I kind of, I think I speak for Jacob Martin on this as well, but like, y'all, we're, we're, y'all are a client now and so from here on out, if something comes up that would help y'all, we're going to bring it up to the city. We're going to say something, I know they work on y'all's CDVG grants all the time and it's, it's just that process of we're not going to let y'all go unnoticed, we're going to think about it and let y'all know and we also have a lot of knowledge on our side when it comes to scoring systems and all that information of, is this actually worth it for the city to spend some time to try to submit for, or do y'all fall way down on the totem pole because y'all have already gotten one in the last five years, et cetera, et cetera? And we try to inform y'all of all that as much as possible and then we work hand in hand with Jacob Martin and all the information they have as engineers to make sure we write that grant as specifically, but not too specifically as we can to get the money that y'all need for the, for the projects that y'all want to do.
And so what do you need from us to make things start moving forward? Do we need, do we need council resolutions, do you need?
No, not, I mean, this comp plan is kind of that step, in all honesty, I think I speak for both Christie and I here, with any of our clients that we work on a comp plan with, it kind of goes in our back pocket kind of thing, we keep it on file, we keep it in our minds. I don't think we've forgotten any of the plans we've written in the last five years just because we get connections with y'all. And so if something comes up and we're like, oh. Um, and so if something comes up and we're like, oh, that needs to be sent over to West Walkme, it's kind of an us thing, it's part of working with us that we like to do. And having this plan in place, we'll go back and look at it. I, I would say the biggest thing from council's side is, like Kevin mentioned, that y'all use this as a plan, every year y'all go in when it's budget season. Y'all actually look at this and go, okay, how much can we budget towards public works, how much could we put up in a grant match if we were, you know, if we were able to get that grant? Discussions like that need to be had, had, and be on the top of y'all's head, um, moving forward, that way it's not a, oh, this grant popped up and we missed it type of situation.
So I, I used the words PIS earlier, do we, does anyone have any questions on what those are, is that, so we get a little quick with some of the verbiage, but, um, TWDB does a state revolving fund each year, and that's your clean water, which is your sewer, and drinking water, which is, basically your drinking water. The PIS is a project information form, and so we submit those for you guys every year. Um, and it, that's what goes into more or less their big barrel of, of what projects are out there, um, and how they're gonna rank them, and they look at different things in the ranking, they look at sure. Certain things have to do with how many grants you've had in the past, um, your income level, how many grants you've had in the past, how much funding they've already given you for less. Um, and then, um, your population, your income per population, um, there's a lot more grant type, and grant type money available for, um,
Low to moderate income.
Yeah, they, yeah, you're, and you're MHI, if it's, you're seventy-five percent of the state's median income, then you get a whole nother, you know, extra grant availability. The reason that, what we saw this year, um, and why it was really important to make sure that we had PIS in for you guys this year, is that randomly, they got a surplus of money last year. And then they went in without telling anyone, which is fine, but they went in and they went, here's all the projects that didn't get funded this year, and they started tagging which ones had to do with water conservation. Um, and with water loss mitigation, and so they pulled those out into a separate pool, and they had, I can't even remember the number that they had, it was, I might use a B word, but I can't remember, it was a large number, amount of money.
Yes.
Um, so we had a lot of projects that didn't make the original, initial round of funding, get funded through the surplus. And so, you know, that's kind of our job too, is to know how to write those and how to keep them in there for you, so that when those random, um, opportunities come up, that you guys are available for it.
And that happens very frequently.
Yes, I mean, you just, you had ARPA money a couple of years ago, um, and that was, you know, not expected, but same type of thing, so. We like it when they have more money than they say.
And so, what kind, we get some feedback, would, would you see something like that, you, you'll come?
Yes, yes.
Tell us.
Yep.
It's, uh, it's to their advantage.
It's a symbiotic relationship, when you get work, we get work.
So I mean, yeah, yeah, the idea is, um, anyway, I'll leave, I'll leave my thoughts on that.
But I do wanna mention again, um, 'cause we've thrown around capital improvement plan and impact fee study, and only because you guys are looking at, you know, you've got a lot of interest in your development, and a lot of company, your heightened interest in development coming to the, the city. Um, and so that impact fee study is, is a way that you guys can not bear the full burden for the infrastructure upgrades that are gonna be needed for your system.
This plan is your first step in that process?
This is the first one, yes, the capital improvement plan would be the second one, and then the impact fee study after that. And that's, the last one is the one that legally gives you the right to say, we can, we can charge this much for this water tap and this much for a sewer tap.
Just add in sub-rates, faults right in the middle of that.
Yeah.
Hand in hand.
Can you follow that as we can get?
Any other questions, though?
We didn't mention streets yet.
Streets, we can scroll down to streets.
You've already answered my question about streets earlier, you know, with a different conversation, but I just wanna make sure that we talked about the fact that, um, you mean drainage and streets go hand in hand.
I agree.
And so I wanna make sure that we're, that we're looking in the process of making sure that the drainage is correct when we do the, the, the road repairs?
Yes.
Or we're just doing road repairs over again?
Correct.
So.
So we've got a project going on right now, I think in Joshua, where that's exactly what they're doing, is they're doing, redoing the road, but it's no, makes no sense to redo the road without redoing the ditches along with it.
Exactly, but we wanna get to that part where we're improving the drainage, not just, um, band-aiding the drainage.
Right.
And, and how do we do that as part of this plan, and so that when we're doing, uh, road repairs or we're doing road builds, then we certainly wanna make sure that we're doing drainage builds or drainage, um, as well.
That, that, that would be idea, yes, but, but the lack thereof-
The same tables for streets.
Okay, so, so I mean, just the elephant in the room, I'll say in, in the alternate neighborhood. So the lackter of being drainage, proper drainage put into that neighborhood for the last forty years, doesn't mean that when we come into, let's say, lay new oil sand down to make your road not full of potholes, I, I, I don't want anybody to get the mis-perception that we will never come in and lay down oil sand before we come in and dig ditches.
No, no, no.
The reason for that is, is because these studies are gonna have to be, have to happen, because there's nobody that works or probably even lives here in this city that could properly go in there and lay out the drainage that was never put in for the last forty years to not affect this property, that property, and that property, and the road to, to states.
Don't disagree at all, don't disagree, I'm, I'm just taking a long line, that, that we're, we're not, that, that we are in the comprehensive outcome of what we're trying to accomplish, that when we do go lay new oil sand, we also clean out the culvert that's right there that's covered up, so that it doesn't just wash away what we just did. That, that, that's what I'm talking about, I said, I, I understand we're not gonna be able to put in a twenty-foot sewer line, you know, or drainage pipe, at, at the same time that we patch up, up a piece of road.
And or cut ditches that are not there, is what I, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
For, for the most part, and, and, and think about it this way. If we come in here and we do two hundred foot of road in this section, it doesn't make real good sense for the city and the liability side of it for, oh, since we're laying, we're laying two hundred foot of road here, we'll cut two hundred foot of ditch as well. And then we're just gonna stop, and the ditch that we just cut goes where? That's, that's what I'm saying, either, either on the drainage side of it, I, I, I don't think everybody understands the grand scale of what that needs to take place. Not, not now, culvert, that's one thing, but, but I, I wanna, I'm saying this because the city is gonna get judged whenever we do go out and clean out just the culvert, but then we don't dig four hundred foot of ditch down here, okay, right? Nobody at this city has the proper training, we don't have the proper equipment to do that ditch a hundred percent correctly. Because there's, there's elevations involved, there's utilities, and, and here's where I was talking to other people, is, what we all have to think about is, for the past forty years, there's been utilities put in, I know in my neighborhood alone. So I got, I got water lines that are two foot under the ground, well, I can promise you, in order to, and I was just talking to a citizen, when did I, Sunday, I think, no, Monday, I'm sorry. I was talking to a citizen, and he's like, oh, yeah, we need to get ditches dug, and I said, well, I can tell you right now, it's gonna be a major undertaking. Why? I said, because the water line's in the way. They're, are you kidding me? No, the water line's two foot deep right here, and he goes, actually, it's only one foot nine inches right here. I dug it up, and I said, so to my point, we can't put a ditch here because there's a water line here. Can a ditch go here, yes, they can, yes, it can, but when that does happen, the utility has to move. We have that entirely all over the city, then you go to other places in this city, and this ditch needs to be dug all the way down here, it was supposed to go through a creek that went, a natural creek that went right here. Well, guess what, there's a guy's shop there, because in the last forty years, we allowed somebody to build a shop there. That's what I'm getting at. I, I wanna make sure that everybody in this city, not just this council, whoever is listening to us, understands that, not saying your culvert, if we have a culvert, these guys should, and hopefully that you get, they will, clean that culvert out if, if it's existing. But that doesn't mean that this water is only gonna run down a ditch that's ten feet long, and then it may run over here where somebody else is gonna get aggravated, is, is all I'm saying. Is, they're not gonna clean, they're not gonna be able to clean the culvert out and dig four hundred foot of ditch to make sure that water that just came out of that culvert goes to a completely different place than what all these people want it to go to. Uh, that's an undertaking that's gonna cost lots of money.
Three hundred percent, my, 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 my point in bringing it up was, as we look at roads that we want to improve, that we are not only improving the road, but we are also improving the-
That, that, that would go without, I think, being said a hundred percent, because a road that is gonna be improved to, I think, improved, when you're saying improved, isn't, is not what we're doing on daily maintenance.
No, 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 we're doing daily maintenance, and yes, and I understand the difference between daily maintenance and, or road improvement, much like we were talking about Maze Lane.
Right.
Right, I would think we would, since we believe that that's gonna be a major thoroughfare in the future, or that's what the comprehensive plan is telling us.
And that work, that work would not be done by us.
By the city, and then any contractor would, would be actually, well, they'd be chopping off their own feet if they didn't, you know, when they quoted it.
I mean, because you can't, they, they've got something to stand by.
Right.
The city can go back to them when it washes out and say, hey, you didn't do this, and they'll say, we didn't pay for grants.
Well, no, I understand, I just wanna make sure that in the comprehensive plan, we are looking at, when we do road, and I will call it the difference between improvement versus maintenance.
Yes, yeah.
You know, a road improvement, that we're also coinciding that with the drainage and even the utilities and the water and everything else, where they're gonna ditch there.
It's gonna be an, it's gonna be an undertaking, I know personally, myself, a lot of areas in our city that, I, I'll just say, we're gonna have hell. We're gonna have hell when it comes time to actually really do this work. We've got sewer lines that are, that are as, as shallow as, as what I just said, we got sewer lines that are that shallow.
Which is gonna come sooner or later.
It is, it is, I mean, it's, and I've never been that explicit in my, my statement that I've made, everybody's heard me sound like a broken record, that we're forty years behind, and that's what I mean by that. That we've had so many things that have happened that have got us to this place that's gonna be a major undertaking. Outside of any city employees' capabilities or, or dollars that this city generates in any budget, that's where we're at.
Make some guns.
Let's get some work, let's get to work.
Yeah.
What y'all got on the page up there?
Oh, it's just the roads, the map for the roads and the different zones.
What are the colors mean?
Up there.
So we went kind of through different zones in this area, and there were, there were two different ways of looking at how you could attack your roads, and it's really how you guys wanna plan them going forward. Um, this is a hybrid, um, as far as, with the feedback, as far as, you know, what's most important. What roads do you guys travel the most, what are your most pain points? Um, 'cause generally speaking, if you have a contractor coming to do roads, you're gonna do it in sections, right? It's easier for them to do a whole area and stay in the same area and do all that work together, but, um, and that's originally, I think, how Nick had it set up. And then, you know, we started talking more with, with making it city-specific as far as what you guys needed done first, and so that's where, again, feedback from the city came in. And so we have more of a hybrid model here. But, um, generally speaking, you guys don't have great roads anywhere.
I'd agree with that.
But, you know, I mean, so you're keeping up with, like, you know, you're gonna prioritize, if you, Maze Lane's gonna be a main thoroughfare, then that's where you're gonna, you're gonna focus your efforts first, and then you'll sprawl out from there into, you know, the different, the feeders and the arterial, arterial roads.
And the tables that were above earlier showed what areas that I can do that little bit.
So that's eleven to twenty years, that's gonna be the lowest, so, excuse me, there you go. So, the planned projects, yeah, so he kinda did them by zones in that first table, so you can kinda see, and, you know, labeled by reconstruct gravel and your low-quality roads, um, you know, overlay your medium-quality roads, um, and then zone two, zone three, and four, so he kinda put them in big sections for you. And then as far as listing things out, what needed to happen in the years for the tables, then like phase one is zero to five, and that's where, um, County Road, Rain Tree Road, right, do you guys call it Rain Tree, okay, so Rain Tree Road and Maze Lane and Shenandoah, those were the big ones that popped out. But they're not small projects, you know, I mean, all of them together, um, you're looking at, you know, one and a half mil for all three of them. And then later on in the years, let's see which ones.
Geneva, Maze, and those.
The latter part of Maze, and then starting to head into some of your neighborhoods, and then your smaller ones should be on your last one. Yep. So that's just how, kinda how you walk it through. But, that's where, I mean, if you guys see any of those priorities that need to be changed.
But today, the city has no impact fees at all, are you for otherwise?
No. And impact fees are primarily for water and sewer. There are a couple cities that have, I think Borlison's done it, or Worth has done it, where they've, and I think Grandview has done it, where they're starting to do impact fees for streets. It's a little different ballgame than water and sewer.
Is street impact fees home rule versus general?
Are they what?
Home rule versus general.
Are they what versus general?
Home rule.
What's home rule?
For home rule cities versus general, general law cities?
Like, there's certain things home rule can require that type A, or type B, or type C can't.
Got it.
Are those?
I'm not sure, it was more, normally, it, it, it came from the fact that they considered the roads to be the city's responsibility. And so, um, with the water and the sewer, you could show easily, hey, you know, we've gotta upgrade this huge line over here in order to give water to this development, and they need to vary, you know, carry a, a cost of that, that's kinda where these came from. Roads didn't come about as simple as that, but now people are starting to say, well, if we put these big, huge developments in, it is taxing our roads and, and, you know, our maintenance fees and stuff that's going up, so they started putting in. Um, I don't think it's as clear-cut, um, you'll have to ask Nick, I think, did one, um, for ASL, and so he knows a little bit more about kinda how those percentages work. But the state passed some legislation that said, if you show a, a ten-year capital improvement plan, and you show the percentage of that capital improvement plan that will be affected by your development, then the cost of the improvement for that development, then half of that you can apply to an impact fee. So it's not everything is covered, but it's not everything on you guys as well. So, and it's just, it's nice to have them all laid out, when a developer comes in, it's the same for every developer that comes in. This is what we've got for sewer tap, this is what we've got for a water tap, and they're done on equivalent meter sizes.
But in order to do that, you have to, you have to resolve, right, and do it after that?
Um.
You'd have to go build Maze Lane, assist the impact fees?
No, not necessarily, you can say, by you moving in, we're gonna have to, in five years, we're gonna have to upgrade this road, so you're gonna pay for that portion of it now, so when it does have to happen, we've got the money for it. Anything else? All right?
What else you got?
I'm good. Good. I'm good.
Okay.
You're good?
Sorry, no new PowerPoint for you guys today. Just have to visit the old book.
You sure? Well, go ahead. Ladies, y'all have anything? Anybody, anybody else have anything that's, that joined our party? No?
So what's next, what happens after today?
That's up to you guys. I mean, we, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep, obviously, this, it helps you in some of your funding, that you've got a comprehensive plan. But it's gonna help, you know, hopefully guide you guys as far as, as a city council, what's, what's your priorities and, and where you guys need to go to make those next steps.
I mean, from, from this plan, or from this meeting, the way I understand it is, you are gonna take some of these changes that we have to this draft, go back to it, make those changes, and they're gonna be bringing us a actual-
Stamp it final.
Rendered, rendered, uh, plan for us to look at in a council meeting.
I was just gonna note that there might be one or two more rounds of future land use drafts before we get the stamp it final, just because we wanna make sure that that is the one hundred percent y'all, the way y'all want it, before y'all adopt it.
Right.
That's kinda-
Just let us know, and we could, we could possibly get y'all, if, if you've got something like that, we could get you in on our next council meeting too, if needed.
Okay, is there another capital improvement plan and things like that coming out of this?
You're saying that, you know, this is a comprehensive, our more specific plan coming out? Capital improvement plan is a separate thing.
That is separate.
Yeah, no, that's, no, that's totally separate from this.
So that's going to be another one, somebody else doing, right?
So that's going to be another one, somebody else doing, right?
Your capital improvement plan would be project-specific.
Will you come up with that?
No, sir. No. Once, if there's a project that we, that we have, like, let's say it's replacing that 31,500 feet of pot. That would become a capital improvement plan that we would get them involved, and that would be the next step in getting that project done. Then we would move to the
Impact fee study.
Impact fee study. And then it would go to the engineering side of things and bidding and yada, yada, so on and so forth.
For the specific projects, right?
To re-select some, some projects out of this and then we do all that stuff, right?
I would switch it just a little bit. Normally, we've seen the city will do the capital improvement plan first. Because you go through and you line item out all the projects that you do want, that you think you could do within the next 10 years. And so then you pick from those, which ones you wanna have done. Or you lead it, that leads, like I said, into your impact fee study where you can start accumulating or acquiring funds from developers coming in to help pay for some of those projects coming up.
So who makes the capital improvement plan? Us?
No, we do.
Is it okay? So we have to select some of the projects?
We'll, it'll be, it's, it's a collaborative effort between the city and the engineer. We'll sit down, we'll take this as kind of our, our, our big picture, right? And then we'll drill down into more specifics of what you guys need for a capital improvement plan.
So you come up with it?
Yeah. So although, although we've all spent, spent some blood, sweat, and tears during this, they spent a whole lot more. So it's gonna be, and they have more passion, I promise you, no matter than what we could all think, than we do at this. So they would, it's gonna be more rewarding for them to see some of this come to fruition, okay? The difference is gonna be, that was never done with the comprehensive plan in the past. And, and I think the reason why is the comprehensive plan in the past was just sort of laid off to the side. These guys are gonna be coming to us and saying, hey, look at your plan, what do y'all think? Do y'all wanna try to, you know, look at doing this? Do you want us to do an impact study? Da, 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 da.
Yeah, so I would say definitely, let's get on board and do a capital improvement plan as soon as this.
I feel like we've created a pretty good partnership. We've been working together pretty good with you guys. And that's, that's really a, a good direction and, and the right direction.
We don't know if all our, the other lady asked this, sometimes, you know, some of these questions are stupid questions, if you just.
Never a stupid question.
It takes the whole team, and they're part of our team. I mean, it's the relationships that we've built, and them being our team is gonna help us succeed at these things.
Thank you, thanks for doing it.
You're welcome.
Everybody got anything else?
No.
All right, well, that takes us to number seven. I guess we're gonna adjourn this meeting. It is 7:51. Y'all? Turn your mics off, please.